Yeah.
Debbie, I believe Debbie that you're still muted.
There we go.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
We got a few folks that are coming in, we'll give them a chance to have a seat. All right, I forgot my jamel today, so if everybody would be polite, that would be great. All right, let's call this meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilwoman Cleveland, here. Councilwoman Sockenheimer, here. Councilwoman Jackson.
Can it be louder? Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Evans. Councilwoman Hong.
Here.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Present.
Councilwoman Rosso.
Here.
Councilwoman Campbell, here. You have a question?
Thank you. The duty of the city of Normandy is to provide a high level of public service and to grow the community through transparent, accountable, and professional governance. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, election of president pro tem of the city council. Sam discovered that, to the letter of the law, we have not been doing this correctly, but traditionally, we have always waited for the new council to be seated, instead of letting the exiting council vote on the president pro tem. I think that the letter of the law is not consistent with the spirit of the statute that was written some time ago, before it took so long to certify elections. So I talked to Andy about this, and there's no issues for us, there's no negative consequence if we don't do this tonight and postpone this to a future meeting and allow the incoming council to vote on their pro tem. So if there were a motion to postpone the election of president pro tem until the next, until the next city meeting, is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agreed.
Item five, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 12, 2024 regular city council meeting?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
There may be a correction that needs to happen.
What is that?
There may be a correction that needs to happen on page seven, the second paragraph. It was difficult for Kiana, being on Zoom, the way the, in favor and approved and opposed, I don't, I don't experience that being accurate.
Which paragraph are you on?
The second paragraph on page seven.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't remember my approving by the following roll call vote of council members voting in favor. It lists my name, and I didn't vote in favor. Oh, wait a minute, is it the time? So the time was 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM? I just don't understand the voting listing. If people think that that's the way we voted, that's fine.
The last sentence is Councilwoman Rosso and Councilwoman Campbell opposed.
But that's not the paragraph I'm looking at, and I'm looking at the above one.
Put your, put your change in the form of a motion.
Well, I was kind of, did everyone else feel that that, the voting was correct on their paragraph?
Are you talking about the times?
Yeah, when it says from 6:00 to 9:00, and then, and 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, the second paragraph, on the motion made by Councilwoman Campbell. Is that correct, Yolanda?
That's not right. It says that we voted in favor.
Of the new, the earlier times.
You want to? Oh, no, that is right. No, we did, we did vote for earlier times.
Well, okay, okay, thank you, I'm so sorry for the interruption.
Okay, and then ultimately, that, that motion failed. Any other comments, corrections? All in favor to approve the March 12, 2024 city council meeting minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye, as have it, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 28, 2024 city council workshop meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is an opportunity for the citizens to come to the podium with any concerns or comments they may wish to address the council. Please.
Suzie Love, is that correct?
Yes.
Would you like me to put a comment, that's what the signing sheet was for.
Oh.
Please clearly state your, oh, you've got her name and address, but clearly state it for the council.
Oh, okay, so, okay, Suzie Love, 7809 Fallway Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, Normandy, Missouri. I'm live back where the Methodist church is, down in that subdivision. And my concerns have been, ever since I've been here, which I've been here over 50 years, and my concern is, like, I go up and down Bermuda, and they have their signs with their, say, like, whatever the name of the street is, they're all nice and green, you come down a nice subdivision, like, our poles are, like, corroded, like, I don't know if the, whatever the people call the work.
Public works.
Yeah, public works, I don't know if that's their job, that it only would take some paint if they don't want to put up a new, new pole, just paint it or whatever, because it just, you know, like, we're down in there, but it's almost like we're not there, and then they have, people think that the subdivision is open, we have 18 wheelers coming down there, turning around right in front of my driveway, because my house sits and down the hill, and I have that big opening, and they make that big U-turn, and even people have visitors, and they come, and they make that big U-turn, and now, right in front of my driveway now, where the X spot is, it's, like, breaking up, and I caught in to, you know, whenever the weather changed, maybe somebody can come and, you know, fix that. So that's my concern about down in my subdivision, because I see what, because I'm right in the front, so I see everything, and so far, as the signs go, you know, it's like, they've been there since I've been there, and I've only noticed that the streets only been paved maybe once since I've been there, and they had yellow lines there, which I know part of the Methodist church, they had did at one time, where they had came all the way down, and now, when they get theirs done, they just stop, you know, on their property, and so now, you know, it's just a hot mess in my area, that's all.
Thank you.
Shelley Foster? Terega?
Hello, everybody, good evening. Long time no see. I've been traveling for quite a bit, so I'm typically not in town the first two days of the month. Wanted to come and say a few things. The last time I was in here about a year and a half ago, I mentioned kind of one of the things that she just did, that whenever I go sweep in front of my yard, I'm sweeping up street, it's just gravel and rock. And the last time, a year and a half ago, Mark, you made a comment, and Sandy said that you guys are going to be doing a street assessment. I don't know where that's happened, but my street is still crumbling in front of my home and washing away. I don't have a curb, I just have to put boulders in front, so people don't drive into my yard. I also, before you got here, Mark, Tony, you were with him when this happened. Maurice was the interim, and he said, "Oh, yeah, we're going to make sure that you guys get street signs." I've been missing street signs in my subdivision now for four years. I know we're not running flush with money, but I don't think that it should take four years to repair signs. I'm helping some people on a project in Creve Court, and they have recently received, Creve Court is a pretty wealthy area, they've received money from the state for tiger grants and CBG funds. And if you get off of Olive and 270, once you get to the hospital, almost all the way down to where Chesterfield or Ellisville starts, you'll see beautiful concretes and curbs, those are paid for, that's not a government handout, that's our tax dollars. Why don't we have those? I haven't had a curb in front of my house for 10 years. The streets are peeling and paving. I want to say a few more things. I don't feel like we should have to come up here and be upset. Something just happened at the election, some of you may have heard about it, I was speaking to someone rallying for Tony Washington to run. Tony Evans gets in the lady's face while I'm talking to her, talking about all of his accomplishments. "Sir, you've been in this seat for over 20 years, you didn't even care enough to spell check the flyer that you passed out." Yes, but, but why though? Because of your actions. Here's the whole thing, if we're going to talk about something, we have to tell the whole truth. You got cursed out because I was this close to this woman, and you just came in her face and my face and stuck your flyer, that's inappropriate. Also, a year and a half ago, two years ago, you told me that you weren't going to run anymore, that you've been in the office for too long, it was time for new leadership. Mark also told me that he was going to be one term, he just wanted to help transition the city because of all the shenanigans going on with Maurice. If you're not going to do anything, why did you keep running for this seat? We can tell you were petrified, because in the past years, you've never run, you found out the other Tony was running, and then you ran. And I'm going to be honest, I've spoken to neighbors, you won on accident. If anybody wants to go back and look, we have never had almost 70 people turn out in my ward. It's one of the lowest voting wards, they just don't do it. But we all want change, you see, our streets are trash, we don't have curb, we don't have street signs. So those extra 35 people that came out, they came out to vote against you, Tony, and I want to let you know that one of the only reasons you won is because there was confusion about the name, and he was a right hand. I know you love talking about Redbird rookies. Most of us don't have kids in Redbird rookies. We want you to do your job for the city. I'm starting to wonder why you like spending so much time with these little boys and not working for your city. You told me you were done, you've been in here 20 years. If you all want to go back, everybody he has talked about, he has gone around and told lies about the gentleman that was going to run, and a whole bunch of other things. Every mayor that you say that was stealing and filthy, every one that you said that was stealing and filthy, you've been here through all of them. So through, through Green, through Maurice, there have been so many, you've been here through all of them, we need new leadership. And if you're going to be here for the next two years.
We are limiting the comments to three minutes.
Okay, does that mean three minutes?
Yeah.
All right, maybe give a 10-second notice next time.
Well, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, so, can we please have something done in Ward 2? I just, for the first time, saw our, what's his name, the guy that runs around, supposed to get tickets? What's that called?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Yes. I just saw him for the first time, and you know for a fact, I've been emailing you about people with trash over and over again. You know what Tony told me the other day, when I said I got a pampers in front of my house, he asked me, did I email you?
I appreciate it, but your time has expired, and I will address some of the comments you made.
Please, thank you.
We do, we do get CDEG funds routinely, and regarding, hey, guys, hey, guys. Regarding, regarding the street assessment, Lice Engineering has been contracted, and I expect that that street assessment will be complete probably in, in, in this month, it should be very near done. And that way, we can prioritize the streets that need the repairs the most with the limited dollars that we have. Is there anyone else?
Uh, no, no mayor.
Thank you. Moving on. Mayor's report. I have a couple items here. One is, as everyone's aware, we dissolved the TIF. One fallout from that dissolution of our TIF is that we've got an infusion of $447,000 into our parks account. And those are going to be so much money dollars to do the improvements that everybody's been talking about in our parks. I will mention this briefly, and we can't have a conversation about it in open public, in an open session, but there has been a petition filed in St. Louis County Court. City of Normandy v. Simmons Bank, it is on case now, if you want the details of it, but I just want to let the council know that it has been filed, and we don't need to go in a closed session to discuss it. There's not, no update at this time, we're just waiting for a response. And finally, I got a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation. Dear Mayor, Vecman, and City Council, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm thrilled to congratulate Normandy on earning recognition as a 2023 Tree City USA. Residents of Normandy should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority. So this was over a year of work, and I'm, I'm real happy that we, we got this far with it. We're going to have, again, more opportunities for grants, because they work in cooperation with the US Forest Service, and it puts us in line for some, some grant money. That's all I have, anything from the council, we'll start at your end, Steve.
I would like to thank all the first responders about that incident in, in Ward 1 last night. It was a serious situation, they, the first responders were there literally in less than five minutes, it seemed. It could have been a lot worse if the police didn't respond and everyone else, so. I just wanted to give a shout out for every first responder that showed up. It really showed how, if everyone works together, you could take a tragedy, and there would be a sense of calmness. So, that's all I have.
Same thing for me, the kudos to Normandy and the surrounding for our department. I've got a list, I'll be quick. On number two, Parchester Park, we need to do something with that park. Steve and Tony and I went there, and it is a liability to Normandy. People are trespassing against, uh, there, and if there's no bridge, we, I recorded a guy walking through there from, I guess, wherever store he went to, just to get to Blanford. It's, it's, it's a horrible, it's, it's a horrible place right now, and it's, it's horrible, and we need a sign that says, "No trespassing." We have no dumping, it needs to say, "No trespassing" as well, we need to do something. We need to sell it or fix it, I think fixing it's going to cost a lot of money to the city, because the whole park is just damaged, it's totally damaged. So we need to sell it to someone who can revitalize that area. Number, my other one is, are tickets being written for repeated violators? I'm, I'm seeing the same violation to the same houses, nothing's done, the trash is still there. We got pit bulls back in more and more, and I just saw one walking across my house, like he was human, just walking. But we, we need something done with pit bulls now, we've got that again, so, but the violate, violations, it's the repeated ones, Doug, we need tickets written, and I don't know what's going on with that.
Thank you.
As, as far as the code violations, is Rick Onstall coming to the meetings, does he have a list?
He's got a report in your packet, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, I'm having the same problem, you know, you're recording stuff, and it keeps happening over and over again. And also, found out over the weekend, we have, we have an Airbnb in Ward 2. And we do have Airbnb in Ward.
Okay, and, and I'll leave that address.
I'll get it to you.
Okay.
The resident told me.
Okay, no, we need the address.
She was paying for Airbnb, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I want to also follow up, give a kudos to the police officers responding to the fire. Did a good job, helped a job on Bermuda, everybody was safe. On site, we were just trying to help out as much as we could, in traffic or what happens. Also, I want to touch bases on, follow up on what Karen was talking about, as far as these, you know, trash being left. I was over on San Diego at, at address, 7523, this looks like a vacant home, there's trash all in the front yard, black trash bags, boxes. And I've seen this several weeks, so, do we have the code enforcer, who's coming by looking at stuff like this on these streets? I mean, if I see this for a month, that means the code enforcer is not doing his job. If Karen is saying the same thing, sending emails, and there's nothing getting done, I mean, the code enforcer is not doing their job. So if he's not doing his job, and he can't come in here to talk to us, who's responsible for it? So we need, whosoever, the manager of that person, he needs to do his job, or we need to find a replacement, that's the bottom line. If he's not doing his job, we don't need to pay nobody that's not doing their job. I'm done, thank you.
I also wanted to thank Normandy PD for their press release today regarding Beldnor Police Services and their participation in providing extra services for our neighbors, because we surround them on three different sides. Also wanted to point out that there will be an Arbor Day celebration at St. Vincent's Park on April 17th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I'll be taking volunteer time off work to attend that, and that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Rick Nelson, third ward, city council. I want to address a couple things, Sam, could you help me out with this? I got several phone calls over the election, that, that one of the candidate's signs were taken out of the yards, and several residents called, and they were very concerned. And I just want to know if those signs, were they in the right of way, because I think they were in the right of way, but can you elaborate on it a little bit for me, Sam? Tell me what's going on with that?
Would you like me to answer, Chair?
Yeah. Actually, if it has to do with the election, it's really not, unless it's a sign violation, it's not, unless it's a sign violation.
I can attest to policy in my report.
Yeah, I like to know the policy right now.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we, we only remove signs if they're in the right of way. So, that includes several feet off the road, little easier to tell when there's a sidewalk, it's different in each subdivision, but we, we only took them out if they were in the right of way. Not everyone realizes that, when they put them up against the road, that they are in the right of way, and we return signs, and then they can put them back out in the proper place.
Okay, so, Sam, I've been on this board for four terms, seven years, I appreciate it, the citizens are building in, and I represent them. But, you know, the thing is, is I put my signs out for four terms, and my signs were never moved, never taken out by anyone, and the signs that were out there, that, that were put out there for one of the candidates, I put them out there, every one of them, because I worked on their campaign. And those signs were not in the right of way, and those signs were removed, several of them, several times out of citizens' homes. They were very upset about that, and I think some of the signs have not even been returned to them. They spent money for that, and I thought, they were thinking that it was a campaign violation, because I do see some signs that were out there by a couple candidates that were in the right of way on Bermuda, and they were not moved. So I don't know if this is a bias situation or whatever, but this candidate was very upset about that. And she did win, but, you know, the, the signs were taken out, and it was a campaign violation, you know, so.
I, I promise you, I mean, we, we took out signs from every candidate that was in the right of way.
Okay, well, the signs that were.
We only took them out if they were in the right way.
Were the signs that were, I've got pictures.
Yeah, and it doesn't really help to speak about general cases, I say.
Can her signs be returned to her?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, return those signs back to her, because she very.
If she requests it, we'll return.
Okay, thank you.
As an ass.
As an aside, Sam, I also have a number of signs missing, but I did not report that to you because it's something to be reported to the St. Louis County Board of Elections.
Yolanda?
There is a Federation of Block Units that Ward 4 joined. It starts April 30th. So if any ward or streets are interested, what they help with is voter registration, senior services, setting goals. It's $25 and it's just basically to engage the public. It's through Urban League. So you can go to the Urban League's website and search for Federation of Block Units. And the meetings are the last Tuesday of the month. So the next one that's coming up is April 30th, if anybody's interested for their block.
Thank you.
Ted?
Thank you.
You're still muted. We can't hear you. Are you muted?
You're muted. No, you're still muted.
Oh, no.
Hold on, we're having.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Hold on, we're working on it.
Hold on.
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I will be attending the same Arbor Day at St. Vincent's Park from 9:00 to 12:00. And looking forward to it. And I'm sure more volunteers could be used. You can just contact City Hall for the information. That's it.
Thank you. I'm gonna claim the floor for just a brief minute. There was an inference made that there were, that suggested there might be some bias on the part of city staff. And I can tell you that the city administrator and city clerk and public works have the highest standards. They're professional. There's no bias toward any candidate. They won't even discuss the issue. So that's all I have to say about that. Moving on, do we have a police officer here for report? I will tell you.
Hold on, my report's first.
Okay, go ahead.
So the city of Bell Ridge, Dooley Police Board, they had to move their meeting. So their meeting's going on right now. I know that they had the police up front. So I would just ask you to move the police reports to the back and they should be here any second.
Thank you.
And then as far as my report, we'll have the fiscal year 2023 audit. Our independent auditor Molly Malone will be here on our next regular council meeting, May 14th. She's planning to attend in person and she plans to report the audit report. And so for your guys' review, similar to what we did last fall when she attended via Zoom. And then we'll ask for the council to approve and accept the report. Right now, there are unaudited statements that we have submitted to the state auditor's office to meet the deadline requirement. So you can go and view those on the internet right now. But the fully audited report with all the notes will be at next month's meeting. I did want to address that we are coming up, hopefully also at that next meeting, we will have the street assessment done. And we also hope to have some stuff for the council regarding the Hoesel Park Tennis Court and the grant that we applied for and got through the Municipal Park Grant Commission. We hope to have some contracts for approval for the city council upcoming at the next meeting. WISE Design Group's working on both those projects and we have a follow-up meeting on Thursday with them to finish up some of those items. There's some extra stuff in my written report. I don't have really too much to add to any of that. I will say, as far as, you know, comments, the code enforcement officer, I'd say keep in mind that he's also the building inspector and probably spends more than half his time inspecting buildings, which is, I mean, that takes a lot of time. So as far as resources allocated to code enforcement, we don't have a lot. And then, I mean, if you're looking to make a change, I would recommend making a change at the city administrator level and not go down into the staff level. Because with our personnel policies, that starts here. So if you're looking for someone.
To do the job?
Yeah, there you go. So, are there any questions?
Thanks, I got you. So can we get a report on how many tickets was issued out by the code enforcer in the last, tell you, last year? Doesn't have to be today, you can.
Yeah, I have that information in front of me.
Right, I mean.
Yes, as far as more detailed reports, because this is just overall numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it tells you the list of violations that he sent out, whatever he's actively dealing with.
Would it be a problem if we had the properties, the addresses?
I, I would have to consult legal counsel with that. And we may be able to do that with the council packets. I mean, they go on our website, so I don't necessarily want to publish, you know, a matter between the state. I mean, it is ultimately a public matter, but I don't like the idea of addresses for those. But I could, if there's a certain address you have a question about, I'd always reach out. Or I can look into providing more details regarding addresses or wards or streets or something like that.
I do agree that I think the number of citations written would be helpful information.
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, it's not really telling.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If the number, I think the number of citations written would be, in addition to the commission, would be helpful.
Okay, so that means we'll leave it up to the administrator to see if we're getting duplicate problems. If complaints, if we have any duplicate complaints, that means since we don't have the addresses, you guys don't have the addresses. So that means that you guys should address it. We shouldn't have to continue to address it.
I would recommend if you see something you don't think has been addressed, please submit it. If you look, I mean, we have 62 proactive complaints and five complaint-based complaints. We get relatively few complaints compared to stuff that we, that the code enforcement officer just proactively goes after. So, and some council members are really great about that and that always helps and make sure that we're addressing and we know about it as soon as possible. So if there's a certain address, please send us an email.
Sam, can I ask a question? It's about reporting because I asked pretty much the same thing at the last meeting. Would it be possible to break out those reports so that individual council people could know what was happening in their wards?
I'll look into it. I know you asked about wards last time. Honestly, it may be easier to do by street, but I'll have to look into that, just based on how the database is structured.
They'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
I need to ask Sam a question.
I mean, if you did about streets, that would be a little bit better to break down because right now we can't break it down to what ward, what street, or if you're not gonna give us addresses.
All right, on this issue, I think we've given it plenty of direction. You have a question, Rick?
Sam, actually, the code enforcement position is not a department. Is it your department head of his department or what?
So there is a position established under Chapter 100 that's a code enforcement officer. But that's really kind of antiquated to back when the code enforcement officer was a volunteer position from a resident of the city. So it's going back, you know, I don't know. I would have to look when the ordinance was established.
Yeah, because you.
But I'll tell you, he's not a department head and he falls under the personnel policy.
Okay, so therefore that means he doesn't have to come to this meeting because we haven't seen him in a year.
Right, yeah, and I.
Don't you think it'd be advantageous for us to have him here sometime so somebody can ask him a question? Because I've seen, he said he has a backlog of.
I don't think he would have any objection, but I do. I don't really see why he needs to come to the meeting.
I don't know.
He's an employee, he's at an employee level and he needs to answer the question.
Okay, so we just have to ask you the questions.
Sure.
Okay, well, I've been asking for months about certain residents, you know, I think they're going to court. I haven't had any information on what's going on with the residents on Contour, you know, the guy I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's like four years. So I'm just trying to figure out, I've got citizens that want to move out of Ward 3 because of that situation. They can move if they want to, but they want to stay. So we just need to have some work done.
Let's go ahead. I appreciate it. Let's keep it to questions.
Okay, so.
Specifically.
Can you get back with me on that?
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Dennis, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, there's a long report in your packet, but I do have a couple of things to add to it that just happened in the last couple of days that are worth talking about. I met with the Non-Housing and the Missouri Department of Conservation. We're going to, come July of 1, we're going to be getting a grant, a 90-10 matching grant to clear out all the invasive foliage along the baseball field, all the way around, and that walking trail. They're gonna clear all that out for us. Our 10% is gonna be in kind. It's gonna be Public Works work and Beyond Housing work. So that grant will cost us nothing. It's never gonna be a lot of work. I wanted to let you guys know that. Congratulations.
Do you have time, Frank Dennis?
They're talking July. It won't be the first grant of the next fiscal year.
Next.
Okay, so that'll start late this summer. No, 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 this July.
This July.
Okay, yeah, within a couple of months. And then, if you've been following in my report, I've been letting, you know, I keep you guys up to date about playground. The progress I've made in trying to repair that, or I shouldn't say lack of progress. I didn't get ahold of the company that made that playground. These guys don't play nice in the sand. You can't put Q-Tell and PlayCore together or anything like that. They only do their own. And I had the candidate luck. And I recently found out that a couple of companies that do plastic repair welding. And I actually have it scheduled for later this month, so our playground will be repaired.
Okay.
Those two things just happened and hopefully next month I'll be able to give you finalized on those.
And in response to a citizen comment that we've heard a couple of times, an inventory of missing signs and signs that are dis-repaired, if you could follow up with that in the next.
We actually have talked about that and I can tell you there's not money to buy signs right now. Maybe next, signs are, those signs are $45 to $65 apiece.
Can we replace the ones that's missing?
There are probably 50 signs missing.
About the city?
There are a lot of signs in post.
We'll follow up on it.
So, yeah, it's something Sam and I have talked about, so it's on our radar. It's, you know, I've been here just getting close to a year now, but it's something that I've targeted, but it's dollars and cents. We have to prioritize where our money's gonna go.
Thank you.
I'm gonna need to paint on that one.
Yeah.
Any other questions for paint? Yeah, one, the one that she was talking to the lady. Yeah, we'll take a look at it. Ms. Karen?
Is there a way that public workers start mowing some of the lawn over there at Parchester Park?
We just started mowing Friday. So, once again, I was, and this is, maybe this is shame on me, but I did not know until a couple of weeks ago that Parchester Park, that went back, where it goes, I had no idea.
I did either.
I knew nothing about that. I, we've been mowing that little gated-off park, park. So I just learned about that and that is on the list of things for Sam and I to talk about and try to figure out something to do with. It's in the very beginning, I just learned about it.
Can we get a sign that says, "No trespassing"?
I can, because I put that on my list to try to come up with a new dumping sign. No dumping.
There's no dumping signs, like we just need a, no trespassing.
Just move them around or something. But I have not ventured back there because I was told not to go back there with my vehicle.
You have to hike up it. Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got a question.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Yes. Greg, this is Mr. Arbo. Residents called me and said that 8:00 o'clock at night, that you remove signs out of the yard.
That's not true.
That's not true?
Not at 8:00 o'clock at night. I guarantee you, we weren't working at 8:00 o'clock at night.
Okay, but did you move, remove the signs out of the yard?
At 8:00 o'clock at night? No.
No, well, did you? Was it 8:00 or 10:00 or whatever?
Absolutely not.
I think we've touched.
We've touched.
We've already.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I want to hear.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
City Treasurer, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpersons, residents, guests. I have the narrative for the February 2024 report. Hope you all got a copy of it.
Financial narrative?
Yes, that's correct. And as well as the report that was prepared by Mr. Johnson. So I will go ahead and start with Part 1, Section A, summary of the income statement for the month of February. The city recorded a net deficit of $228,000. Revenue was of $406,000 versus expenditures of $634,000. Due to that result, city realized an overall net deficit for the fiscal year to date for five months of $701,000. And its revenues of $1.706 million compared to expenditures of $2.407 million. So there will be some expanded detail that Mr. Johnson was able to provide that will be given in Sections C and D as well to explain those. So, Part 1, Section B, summary of the general fund balance. General fund unrestricted cash balance as of February 29th, $963,000. The Village of Lanico Park project balance as of February 29th, $74,000. General fund board designated as of February 29th, $746,000. Amounts due to general fund from other funds, $99,000. Amounts due from general fund to other funds, $107,000. Resulting in an overall general fund balance of $284,000. Moving on to Part 1, Section C, income for the general fund. Ideally, the percentage of budget remaining for income at fiscal year end. I'm sorry, for the five months of this year, fiscal year, excuse me, should be at or below 58.3%, which would indicate that the amount of actual income was either the same or more than the budget amount for income. Unfortunately, the city fell short of the budget amount for income for fiscal year to date by $268,000, or 5.7% of the total budget amount. And explanation for this point so far, for permits and licenses, revenue should catch up when the USDA submits payment for their TI building permit likely later this month. No grant funds have not been received yet, but we expect to receive all that were budgeted by this fiscal year end. Time revenue is underperforming significantly compared to what was budgeted. We will fall short of the budget amount by about $150,000 likely due to failure to remain a full staff in the police department as we had to limit our traffic enforcement controls to ensure that we had enough manpower for other public safety functions. It's Part 1, Section D, expenditures by department under the general fund. Conversely, percentage of budget remaining for expenditures at year-to-date for the first five months of the fiscal year should be at or above 58.3%. which would indicate that the amount of actual expenditures was either the same or less than the budgeted amount of expenditures. Unfortunately, the city spent more than it had budgeted for fiscal year-to-date by more than four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, or nine-point-one percent of the budget amount. However, when it came to the individual departments, some felt better in keeping expenses under budget while it did not. The one under budget was the court, while the others were over. Included in expenses for this month was the last installment of the property and liability insurance premium totaling two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-twelve dollars. And this greatly affected the expenditures in the administration, police, and street departments. So concludes my report, and we will take any questions.
Anybody have questions to Mr. Ellis regarding?
So you're saying that this is the last installment?
Yes.
Okay. How many installments were there?
Yeah, there was three.
Three installments, so this is the last one.
Twenty-five percent due in October, twenty-five percent due, I think it was December, and then this was fifty percent.
So this is it?
And Sam and Charles, that was two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-twelve dollars for that fifty percent installment.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a five-hundred-and-twenty million-plus-dollar insurance premium that we got.
Yeah.
Yet we're. And Ian, you can see in the report that there's an RFQ out there for insurance.
Sheriff's care, yeah. Then that was under Sam's report.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Ellis?
Actually, Mr. Ellis, do you have all your ducks lined up for the pending audits?
I will be working with Mr. Johnson for whatever is needed, but yes.
Okay.
In my understanding, yes.
Is it, is there a motion to approve the February twenty-twenty-four? Oh, I'm sorry. You got a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, so it's like, at the rate we're going right now, throughout the fiscal year, we stay on course, we're going to make budget.
The way I see.
Best guess to make, our best guess.
Right. The way that I see it, we're almost halfway through, and if we are to make the gains in the revenues that we're forecasting, we should fall a little bit short of the budgeted amount for revenues. As far as expenses, we're already running over half there. So we are running at the equivalent of what we had budgeted for six months already, after five months. So I would say, because, you know, we probably anticipate running the same type of expenses that might need a little bit of retool, I would recommend. But I would say that, based on, again, the revenues, we should come close, but it's not going to be to a point to where it'll be a zero or positive in my estimation.
I would like.
Please.
Remind me where it's going. I do think, I'm not worried about any of the revenues except for court fines, and I think at this rate, there will be, like Charles mentioned in his report, I think around a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, we're going to come up short from what we budgeted. So that's very significant. As far as the expenditures, I think we'll probably be slightly over budget administration, but I don't expect us to run over budget in the police department, although they have the most liability insurance, but when you look at their payroll and their operating budget, I don't think we're going to end up over there. We may end up slightly under. And then, in the street department, we may run slightly over with some of the repairs that we've had to do to, we had a clutch go out on the limb chipper and just some other repairs and some older equipment, like the leaf back this fall. So I think we'll run slightly over budget there as well. The other departments, it's going to, we'll be pretty close to where we budgeted.
Thank you.
Last question, Sam. How much, again, if you could remind me roughly, how much money did you allocate to administration as a result of the ridiculous increase in our insurance premium?
Yeah.
Because that, you guys would have been in budget, you would have been fine.
Yeah, I know that.
Six hundred thousand dollar insurance.
Yeah, with the liability insurance, in previous years, that's always just been in the administration or city hall budget. This year, we actually broke it out by department, which I think we should have been doing anyways, but we did do it this year. So I, I think we'll be over regardless of the, regardless of the insurance bill. Taking that into account, we'll be over, and I, I do think that's going to be on legal fees that we're going to be over. Like Mayor said, I mean, we filed a petition Monday, so that's going to be a drag of that cost.
Okay, so.
And that's going to show up in the budget.
In the hall. Is there a motion to approve the February twenty-nine, twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four financial report? We have a motion, is it second? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on. Old business, Council Bill twenty. Oh, chief, I'm sorry, my apologies. Please.
Good evening. After that news, you guys would have passed me right over. I got the hot spot, thank you. So the police department report spans between Friday, March first, and Monday, April first. There were one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight calls for service, one-hundred-and-forty-one police reports generated, fifteen accident reports taken, three-hundred-and-thirteen citations written, and three-hundred-and-twenty-four business checks. It's notable to mention that our ticket production right now is up, it's three-hundred percent higher than it was this time last year. So we are making strides. I know you guys heard about some of the deficits in the police department regarding staffing. We're working diligently to get those positions filled. It's just hard to keep people because everybody, this new generation likes money. And St. Louis County's talking about raising their salary to eighty or ninety thousand. It's ridiculous. But hopefully, the people that we have here, they like being here, and we're getting more and more dedicated people that want to serve, and so for them, it's not about the money, it's about the commitment and the service, and I love that. As the chief, I'm very blessed. Some high news, let's talk about some good things. We know we detached an officer to the DEA last year around budget time. I'm happy to report that he's actually shut down two drug houses in Bell Ridge since he's been in the Bureau with DEA. The last one that he shut down last week, it was about a week and a half ago, they recovered seven kilograms of fentanyl, which is enough to kill all of the citizens in all of the cities so that we provide service for, along with several pill presses, seven guns, three people were arrested. And so we'll be anticipating some seizure money once that case has been adjudicated. We also just had noticed that he has made another ten-thousand-dollar seizure while he's there. So he's, he's doing good work, and that's coming to fruition. Our dreams and goals with regards to what we aspire for him to do there are coming to fruition, and so I wanted to mention that. I don't know if you guys noticed, we were talking a little bit about housekeeping in the city. I want to thank Dennis publicly. We brought up the condition of the, the building and the aesthetic of how, when people are coming and going from jail, they could see our weeds outside. And typically, we get together, we prune it, and try to do what we can to keep it down, but Public Works did a big thing. They came through and they spent a lot of days fixing up the outside of the building. Just because we have a tiny house doesn't mean it needs to be unkept. And I'm very appreciative to the restoration project that they did outside the police department entrance. The aesthetic is far better, and it just speaks to where we've come from and where we're going. We're actually in the process of incorporating a female locker room because we have so many female officers now. So we're making some revisions to the building and moving some things around so that we are inclusive. We have a couple more people graduating from the police academy next month, another female and potentially another minority candidate, which will put us at six females, which is about almost a third of the department, and that's the first time in Normandy history. So it speaks to our diversity and inclusion efforts, and I'm thankful for everyone, including Sam, that helps kind of make these things, and the police personnel board that, that help with these things, that help us get these people across and get them in uniforms. I'm very ecstatic about that. I know you guys heard about the bus yesterday on Ellington, so I want to address that very quickly. There was an incident involving a bus driver, and the bus caught on fire. All of the students and the bus driver were able to evacuate, but they were unable to secure the emergency brake on the bus, and it was engulfed. So everyone exited the bus, and unfortunately, it rolled downhill, and it struck a residence on Ellington, causing a series of explosions. It was extremely chaotic. There was a lot of emergency apparatus. At one point, we had to shut down Bermuda on both ends just to allow the fire apparatus to get in. We're really relieved that no one was injured in the bus or the home. It's nothing but the hand of God that everyone was safe. And that, you know, although the family that is displaced now, we've connected them with the Red Cross, the United Way. The fire department did a big thing in getting them in contact with them, and we're going to continue to follow up with the family to make sure that they have some resources and do what we can. I've been told that there's a GoFundMe forthcoming, so I told them that we would do what we can to further those efforts once they make that happen. They really did lose everything in a matter of seconds. But I think the bigger testament is that, you know, the men and women of the police department were able to keep chaos under control. We were able to get all the emergency apparatus in there. There were no more damages to any adjoining or adjacent residences. I know that the city is going to be working with the owner. Last night, he boarded up the property, and I know Andy said that he's going to start working with us about what we're going to do with the property as to whether we'll determine if it's a total loss of the property and it needs condemnation or what the plans of the owner are moving forward. I do want to state that the owner of the property is actually the owner of the chop suey. So he's not just a property owner, but he is a stakeholder in our community. So he is one-hundred percent on board with helping us and working with the city to facilitate.
Did the house catch on fire also?
Yes. There was a series of explosions, and the entire forward-facing portion of the home is completely demolished. The front wall was actually leaning in at the house. So, yeah, it was, it was pretty bad. So to everyone that was in fear, everyone that heard that, your police department was there, the situation was under control. We can't prevent these types of things that, you know, from happening, but I want to commend my staff publicly for their, their response to that and the level of participation that we had. I was getting on the highway to head home, and I saw the smoke, and I heard the radio, and it was all hands on deck from there. We were here until about eleven o'clock last night dealing with that situation. The last thing I want to touch on very quickly, I know everyone's seen the Normandy Facebook post. The Normandy, this is the only statement that I have. The Normandy Police Department is very much interested in an opportunity to present what we have to offer to the citizens of Bell Nor by way of police service, if the, if the opportunity is afforded to us.
Thank you.
How many in our agency officers that we have now?
How many total officers? We're budgeted at twenty-seven, not including our school resource officer and our DEA agent, so those that will put us at twenty-nine, and presently, right now, we're at twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay. Are we still just doing twelve-hour days?
We're on twelve-hour rotations, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
St. John, are they, with Bell Nor, are they controlling them, like temporarily?
They are not.
Oh, they're not?
Right now, Bell Nor Police Department is still in place, and they're not being disbanded until April twenty-fifth. However, we all heard the news on Friday. We were all kind of taken aback. And there were a lot of residents in our community and the Bell Nor community that started reaching out to me and asking, is there no police service here? They felt, they, they felt very concerned about the projection to the community at large that there's no police in there, which is concerning to us because they're a donut hole. We surround them on all sides, so their public safety mission directly affects our public safety mission. We felt it incumbent to give the residents some security. So we have, when we go through Bell Ridge to Castle Park, St. Vincent's Park, we go through the city limits of Bell Nor, and we have been since nineteen forty-five. So they, by virtue, benefit from us just driving through to get to other places where we provide service. We are now making a dedicated effort to show our faces in there and to be seen, and by overwhelming support of the community, we've received a lot of positive feedback that they're just glad that we're providing that neighborly service. So then that way, the ne-do-wellers will not come here to ne-do-well. That would hurt us all.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now, moving on to old business. Council Bill twenty-four-dash-six, is there a motion for a second reading of Council Bill twenty-four-dash-zero-six?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-four-dash-zero-six, ordinance, the city of Normandy, Missouri granting Tohni's Cafe and Wine Bar a special use permit for the operation of a restaurant at seventy-three twelfth Natural Bridge Road and establishing certain conditions relating thereto. Is there a motion to adopt Bill twenty-four-dash-zero-six?
I have a question about.
Well, let's, let's see if we can get a second first.
I'll second.
There's a motion and there's a second, any comments?
Sorry, I heard. On page two, Section C.
Section, I'm sorry?
Section C.
Thank you.
Oh, Section three, sorry, three C.
Three C, thank you.
How many days? How many days will they, will the establishment have to notify the city for, about changes about managing personnel? I didn't see that part. Is there?
Is that a question directed to me or to Sam? Or to whomever?
Which section?
Section, section three. Section three, C.
So it does not specifically say, let me check four oh five seven ninety to see if there's a special use permit ordinance specifies that. Otherwise, I would say that it's, in the absence of a specific timeframe, it's going to be subject to just kind of a reasonableness standard. That's not to say that the city could not put in place a, or, or, you know, specify a concrete timeframe, right?
I'd like to make a motion as a, a weak one.
Okay. You can make a motion to amend and be specific about the language.
So, where would we put it? It shall be the responsibility to notify, okay, so I make a motion to include in Section three C, it shall be the responsibility of the cafe and wine bar to notify the city within seven business days of changes in information hereby, required hereby.
There's a motion to change the language in three C to include a seven-day time period to notify the city of any changes in management.
Seven business days.
Seven business days, thank you. There's a motion to amend, is there a second?
I second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Any questions, Andy, on what, do we write on that?
The way I understand it, it's going to read, it shall be the responsibility of Honeys Cafe and Wine Bar to notify the city of any changes in the information required hereby within seven days of Honeys knowledge, or seven business days, excuse me.
Upset change.
Upset change, yes.
All right.
That's under manager, right?
I've got a question for Sam.
This is out of this time.
Got the letter.
Any other comments?
The other one that I had a question about was for the special use, for D, same Section D. It says, the special use permit granted hereby shall expire and immediately terminate six months from the date of operation of this ordinance unless the permitee shall have commenced operation of the restaurant on the premise. Does that include the food program?
No, it would, it would just include the use of a restaurant. So, not any specific program, as long as they start the use of, of what they've applied for, then that's all it's talking about.
And that, that's a provision that's in the code, so that would apply regardless of whether or not it was spelled out here, but we spell it out here just to make sure that the permit holder is aware of it as well.
Do we need to include anything about outside seating, cooking, barbecues, selling food outside such?
So right now, outdoor seating is not allowed in the city.
Do we all need to include it, though, in this?
Correct, because it's, it's not a permitted use in the city of Normandy.
For F, I'm not really sure how this would work. It says, the premises for which the permit is granted shall all times be maintained in conformity with the property maintenance. And shall be litter-free, free of landscape and. And shall be litter-free, free and landscape, and landscaping shall be maintained in healthy conditions. Does that, can, does that include, or can that include contracts that they make with surrounding parks or businesses? Because I know like, one of the, one of the things that it talks about was using Afro World. I don't know if that, I say a parking lot, so like if trash is left behind by one establishment on another establishment, but it's not necessarily on their establishment, does that, but because they have a contract with that, does that, is that included?
I would suggest it wouldn't, but if Afro World gets a ticket for trash, they're not going to be able to maintain that agreement very long.
Right, I would, I would suggest that if, if, let's suppose that, right, there's a contract to use a neighboring, an agreement to use a neighboring parking lot as overflow, and that parking lot is becoming trashed, the property owner of that lot would certainly be written a ticket and they would probably revoke their permission pretty quickly if that, if that happened. I, at that point, would also start looking into the terms of the property maintenance code. There can be pretty broad property maintenance, the property maintenance code is pretty broad in terms of allocating responsibility towards not only property owners, but tenants, anyone who is deemed to be in custody or control of that property. And so there could be questions about whether that agreement, such an agreement would, would kind of render the, these property owners responsible for the maintenance of the neighboring parking lot that they're using for the better of their property. Does that kind of make sense? I see some.
It kind of sounds like we cross that bridge when we come to it.
Well, certainly, I don't want to say cross that bridge when we come to it, I would say that it brings up unique enforcement issues that would have to be addressed. But I don't think it would be the case that there would just be nobody responsible for, for the property. I think that would exist, the actual record owner would be responsible for the litter.
And they would have to take it up with the.
Exactly, right, that's.
The other question that I had was about the trash containers. I don't see this part, but do we need to include the enclosure for the, the enclosure on the, on the parking lot?
Far.
Or, yeah.
That's already in our city code.
But do we need to?
That falls under subsection K. Trash container sufficient and adequate for storage of all, in compliance with all applicable provisions of the Code of Ordinances, which would include the screening ordinance.
So we don't, so, I know we talked about having the, the enclosure on the parking lot and the owner has to determine where the enclosure is.
So, and Sammy might be able to speak to that rather than me, but, because that's more of a.
Yeah.
And so we said that they had to have, the owner had to have the enclosure, correct me if I'm wrong, within, was it three months?
Yeah, six. So, in this, in this, it says that within six months of the issuance of this license, or.
I think that was accurate.
Yeah, six months of approval of this special use permit, yeah, that the owner has to provide an enclosure for the dumpster pursuant to.
That gave them the opportunity to, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, to consolidate those two lots.
Yeah, and then also, if this, if it is approved, we'll grant a, not only will the special use permit be conditional, so will the occupancy permit, it will be a conditional occupancy permit, conditional that the dumpster enclosure is built within six months, which is pretty standard for.
So K takes care of the enclosure?
Yeah.
The other question that I had was about, this is a question that I think came up last time, about the color of the building and if it was in, in compliance with our code. And that was something that.
My understanding of the code, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have an ordinance regarding the architectural conformity, which has to do with the architectural features of the building and how those conform to surrounding properties. And if someone pulls a building permit for that color, or, no, sorry, if someone pulls a building permit for those changes and the building commissioner thinks this isn't really in conformity with the surrounding areas, they can kick it to an architectural review. I do not believe color falls under the category of architecture. It doesn't, one, you don't need a building permit to paint your building, so we can't even hold a building permit. And then two, the code is pretty clear about what architecture is, and color is not architecture, although it is a style, I guess, but I, I do not think that we can, with the way our ordinances are written now, that we can dictate what color.
What section of code is that?
405050.
The other question that I had, well, I guess this is more of a comment. So with the, with the issuance of the permit, it talks about the, let me get this right, the establishment would somehow deteriorate the value of the surrounding homes? I guess, I'm paraphrasing, but is there a way, because there are some homes, and I'm not really sure how this would work, with Afro World being used as an additional still over parking lot, where at night, those vehicles actually flash their lights into the back of residential buildings into the homes or their bedrooms, which, if I were selling my home and I knew that there was a bar there that used that property and it did those things, it would in some way deteriorate the value of your home. Is there a way to, I guess like, make sure, or put some kind of barrier up, or we could require it, or no?
Well, we've got a fencing regulation that's.
But that's only for new.
That's only for new.
Right, you're specifically worried about headlights in the Afro World parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah, and whether they enter into an agreement with Afro World or not, it's not really under this special use permit. So we can't, right, we can't make this conditional on.
But one of the.
Their neighbor making improvements to their property.
Okay, but one of the, one of the seven, I want to say seven or eight topics that you listed in the last report, was, was the value of the property being, of neighboring properties being somehow affected by.
Yeah, and if you think it, if the use deteriorates the property values of surrounding properties, you can either try and mitigate it, and I don't really see a good way to mitigate what you're talking about now, or you can vote no. Yeah.
Any questions at the other end? Get him. All right. We have a motion, we have a second, and we have a roll call vote.
I'm sorry. I actually have a question. What was the motion that was made at the workshop regarding hours? Because I want to make sure that that made it into the ordinance, and if it didn't, then we need to restate that motion.
I think it did.
Or did, or did that motion not pass?
That motion failed. It failed.
Let's look at the minutes.
The 10 and 10 failed. The 11 and 10 was, was 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock was the one we voted.
10 o'clock, Sunday through Thursday.
And the weekend, 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
Hold on one second.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, so Mayor, you made the proposal.
Yes, I made the motion to change it and it failed.
It did fail, so it went back to what was originally.
Correct.
Okay, my memory, I'm sorry.
I made the motion to reduce the operating hours and my motion failed. So the, the language that was in there before is in there now. Okay.
That actually brings me to a question. I'm looking at this and I noticed that I have the hours written as, hours of operation shall not begin before 6:00 a.m. on any day, shall not end after 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and shall not end after 11:00 p.m. Friday through Sunday. Is Sunday subject to the 10:00 p.m. or the 11:00 p.m. closure?
My, my understanding, no, Sunday through Thursday was the 10:00 p.m. closure.
Is that, was that, that was the.
That was, that was, we need to change that.
Yeah, that needs to be changed.
So, Sunday through Thursday was, all right, which paragraph do you want?
That's three M.
Three M.
M.
Thank you.
Mary.
Give me just a second. I'll have it here in a second.
I think it may be a good, I know that the directions were to draft it the way that for Sunday through Thursday and Friday through Saturday, but as submitted to the council in writing right now, it says Monday through Thursday, Friday through Sunday, I think it would be a good idea to have a motion to amend to reflect the council's.
Yes. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to amend section 3M by deleting the language and replacing it with, hours of operation shall not begin before 6:00 a.m. on any day and shall not end after 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and shall not end after 10, 11 o'clock Friday and Saturday?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion, is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, anything else?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion and keep, keep them open on, switch Sunday to Thursday. So they close, let them on Thursday and close at 10 on Sunday. Taking a day from them, hour from them on their Sunday, so, I mean, I think this should be fair to give them another day, it should be Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 11 o'clock, Sunday through Wednesday, 10 o'clock.
There's a motion to allow the establishment to stay open till 11 o'clock on Thursday. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
No, no.
All in, please.
Councilman Cleveland? No. Councilman Saxon here?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Evans?
Yes.
Councilman Hong?
No.
Councilman Nelson?
No.
Councilwoman Campbell?
No.
Councilwoman Russo?
No.
I have five noes and three ayes. Amendment fails. All right, anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilwoman Cleveland? We want to approve this?
We want to adopt, a yea vote will adopt Bill 2406 as ordinance.
Yes. Councilman Saxon here?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Evans?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Hong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Russo?
No.
Councilwoman Campbell? No.
I have five ayes, three ayes. Motion carries, Bill 24-06 is adopted as ordinance number?
Eight zero seven.
Eight zero seven. All right, give me just one second, I'll pull up that language again, it'll change. Council Bill 24-07, second reading, is there a motion for a second reading of 24-07?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion carries. Bill 24-07, in ordinance to the city of Normandy, Missouri, granting to Honey's Wine Bar a special use permit for the operation of a bar at 7312 Natural Bridge Road and establishing certain conditions relating thereto. Is there a motion to adopt Bill 24-07?
So.
And we, is there a second?
I have a question.
Yep, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or changes?
On this one, it also says.
Yep.
Well, actually, we just need to delete N, because I believe the correct hours are listed in A on this one, so we can just delete N.
Let me, let me read it.
Okay. It was not like that on the other one.
Okay.
So it was already.
Not on the other one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Close at 10:00 p.m. on Monday through Thursday. One, two, three, four, one, two, three.
Sun, yeah, very first page, section 3A.
Yeah.
Closing at 10 o'clock, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
It says Monday through Thursday.
Page one.
Page one. Oh, wait a minute. 24-07?
Yes.
Page two, page, it's on page one.
She's saying page one.
Page one has.
It has a misphrased, which it does.
One, two, three, the third word S. At the bottom. Closing at 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, closing 11 o'clock on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, I believe that was the planning and zoning recommendation, but it's not going to affect the ordinance.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you, Sam. Is there a motion to delete in section, section 3, paragraph M? Hours of operation shall not begin before 6:00 a.m. on any day and shall not end at 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday and shall not end after 11 o'clock Saturday, Friday through Sunday?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion to delete section 3M, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other comment or questions?
I have a question. So, when, what liquor will be served? Is there a limit on a hard liquor, is it wine, beer?
Well, they haven't got a liquor license yet. That's a separate application and a separate property hearing.
Got it.
That's not part of what we're doing here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We, is there a motion to, we have a motion, we have a second to adopt 24, I'm sorry.
May I suggest a similar change to the change regarding notification of any changes in management?
Thank you.
That would be 3D in this ordinance?
Thank you. Is there a motion to amend the language of 3D to read as follows? The special use permit granted hereby shall expire and immediately terminate six months from the date of adoption of this ordinance unless permittee shall have commenced operation? Oh, I'm reading the wrong part. What paragraph do you want?
D, D is in dog.
I'm sorry. Is there a motion, I'll restate the motion, is there a motion to amend section 3D to read as follows? I need to read it. No, I, I'm, I'm reading, it's different on this one.
So, correct, the, the, the condition.
Yeah, I was reading off the old one, trying to, yeah. Within seven days, okay, I got it now. Is there a motion to amend section 3D, last sentence to read as follows? It shall be the responsibility of Honey's Wine Bar to notify the city of any changes in the information required hereby within seven days of said change.
Business.
I'll restate. It shall be the responsibility of Honey's Wine Bar to notify the city of any changes in the information required hereby within seven business days of any said change. within seven business days of any said change.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Are there any, any other suggestion, suggested amendments or changes? We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Cleveland? We're approving this, correct?
Yes, I, 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 I vote we'll approve Bill number 2407 to become ordinance.
Yes.
Councilman Saxonheimer?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Evans?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Hong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Russo?
No.
Councilwoman Campbell?
No.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Bill 24 dash 07 is adopted as ordinance number?
808.
808, thank you. All right, moving on, council, yes.
Can they leave or is it okay or what?
Yeah, they can.
They'll stay here if they want to.
Council Bill 24 dash 08, is there a motion to have a second reading of Bill 24, number 24 dash 08?
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Bill 24 dash 08, an ordinance to the city of Normandy, Missouri, amending chapter 415, sign regulations regarding exempted signs, nonconforming signs, electric signs, temporary signs, and unlawful signs. Is there a motion to adopt Bill 24 dash 08? Motion, we have a motion, is there?
Second.
We have a second. Any comments on this, this one's been around a while.
Yeah.
Questions? Okay, um, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Saxonheimer?
Yes.
Councilman Cle, oh, Councilwoman Cleveland?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Evans?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Hong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Russo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Yes.
Ayes have it, motion carries, Bill 2408 is adopted as ordinance number?
Uh, 809.
809, thank you. All right, moving on, Bill 24 dash 09, is there a motion to adopt, uh, is there a motion for a second reading of Bill 24 dash 09?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Bill 24 dash 09, an ordinance to the city of Normandy, Missouri, repealing chapter 130 boards and commissions, Article 2 Historic Preservation Commission, and amending chapter 405 zoning regulations by the enactment of a new Article 21 Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a motion to adopt Bill number 24 dash 09? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments regarding?
Question, why do we have 2, 2409 revolutions? Oh, never mind, once, once, one of the, never mind.
Okay, we're, we're good?
Yes.
Any, any comments?
I thought it was very thoroughly written.
Uh, it, it's, it's good work.
Straightforward.
Should we, um, mayor, before, um, I just want to make sure. There was, uh, at the workshop, there was a requested change to reduce the number of members from seven to five. And this version lists seven, so let me just?
Give me a page, please.
Uh, sorry, that would be the bottom of exhibit A, page, they're not numbered, but it's the third page. Section 405, 1130A.
Anybody can find that one. Exhibit A about?
It's on the third page.
Third page. Thank you. Well, that wasn't my recommendation. The members have to know something about historic preservation, and it's been a real chore finding people to serve on boards and commissions. So I, I would, I would, it's, at, at my recommendation, and I'm asking for this commission to be reduced from seven members to five members, and so I'll ask for a motion to amend the section 405 dot 1130 Historic Preservation Commission to read as follows? The Historic Preservation Commission shall consist of five members who are residents of the city of Normandy. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We need to, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Andy. We read, I need to restate the motion, is there a motion to adopt Bill 24 dash 09 as amended?
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Saxonheimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cleveland?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Evans?
Yes.
Councilman Hong?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Russo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Yes.
The ayes have it, Bill 24 dash 09 is adopted as ordinance number 810. Is there a motion to have a second reading of Bill number 24 dash 11? So, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 24 dash 011, an ordinance to the city of Normandy, Missouri, amending section 140 dot 300 and repealing section 140 dot 310 of the Normandy City Code. And, um, are there any questions regarding what we're doing with this? Andy, this was to put us in compliance with state statute?
Uh, correct, regarding, um, this, this stems from a recommendation from the Supreme Court monitor. So what this does is, uh, limits the ability of my office and the, the police department to issue charges for failure to appear in court on minor traffic violations, a practice we're not doing anyway, but this brings us into compliance with state statute, uh, as well as, um, repealing a section of the code regarding reimbursement of costs for confinement. This is a practice that is very much frowned upon, and again, not inactive, any sort of active enforcement.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adopt Bill 24 dash 11?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion to adopt. And is there a second?
Second.
Second, um, any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Saxonheimer?
Yes.
Council, Councilwoman Cleveland?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Evans?
Yes.
Councilman Hong?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Russo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Yes.
Ayes have it, motion carries, Bill 24 dash 11 is adopted as ordinance number 811. All right, new business. Council Bill 24 dash 12, is there a motion for a first reading?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Bill 24 dash, 24 dash 12, an ordinance to the city of Normandy, Missouri, amending chapter 600, alcoholic beverages to require a favorable vote of two-thirds of all members of the city council to approve any liquor license protested and written in writing by a majority of property owners within 200 feet of the proposed location. Are there any questions or suggested amends?
Can I just run through?
Please.
I know everyone's had a chance to review it in the packet, but this updates three sections of our liquor license code. And the main thing that it does is, right now, it's required that signatures are, from the neighborhood, are required on the application, and if the signatures, the majority of the signatures are not received, then the application is not complete, doesn't even get considered by the city council. It changes that to where, uh, when an application is received without signatures, notice goes out to surrounding property owners, and similar to our zoning process, they can file a protest. If they do file a protest, then it will require a supermajority of the council to approve it. So it's very similar to our zoning procedures as they are, uh, and completely changes the, the bar for, for neighborhood approval. In addition to that, it cleans up a lot, uh, of this kind of messiness in the code.
That, that is a little confusing, uh, for instances.
For instance?
Section 600, 060 and 070 had a lot of overlap, and sometimes it wasn't clear which one. I mean, I, it is clear when you really dig down to where the periods and commas are, but it makes it a lot more clear about what's the process for a new application and what's the process for a renewal. And, and just makes things more clear. And additionally, 080 has a requirement that I just don't think is very reasonable, and so I would like the council's input on this. Uh, it says that for packaged liquor license, so this would be a liquor store, or a convenience store, or even a grocery store, that there can only be one license issued in the city. So the language in here changes it to, uh, the council could increase that amount, or not change it, or get rid of the requirement, but I think just having one, uh, isn't very reasonable. And I'll tell you, I, I believe we have at least two in existence right now, so.
Okay, so I'm going to paraphrase the first portion of what you said. If somebody applies for a liquor license, they can get approval by a simple majority of this council. If they apply for that liquor license and neighbors in a, what kind of perimeter?
200 feet.
200 feet. Majority of those neighbors object, then that, that standard for approval goes from a simple majority to a supermajority, which is two-thirds. That's what we're, that's the, one of the changes being made.
So let me, can I ask a question?
Yes.
It says that, I mean, Sam, I believe I heard you say that, um, in the case of a liquor license application that came without signatures, there would be a process of notifying the people, the city would know, notify the people?
Let me clarify what I, I said. And under the current code, we get a, a application without signatures. It's just not a complete application, it doesn't even get considered. Under this proposed change, no signatures are required, the applicant is not required to gather signatures. They submit an application, no signatures, and then the city sends out written notice that an application has been filed, and the neighbors can take it upon themselves to file a protest.
I have a question, why not go ahead?
The city would then, when the application came, then the city would reach out to those people and say, hey, this is coming, do you want it, if you don't want it, let us know.
That would be part of the public, public notice hearing, it would require also a public hearing.
Well, it, it does not require a public hearing, in that it doesn't get posted in the newspaper, and it's not generally open to the public, but it does require an administrative hearing, just like?
Slightly different.
But where property owners and tenants and business license holders get notice, and then they have the right to come and speak at the hearing, which is slightly different from a public hearing. It, it's more of an administrative hearing where we, the council weighs facts and decides whether the license should be approved or not.
Any other questions?
So, so how?
Debbie, go ahead.
Um, when I first read the, the beginning, it sounded, or like individual letters, and then the wording went to petition, so these neighbors, um, it is, has anyone else read it that way? Is it one way or the other, or both?
What section are you on?
We should have underlined it. Okay, so, section 1, 2, 3, 4, whereas, um, and that's, which shall be triggered by the filing of a written protest duly signed by a majority of property owners, um, so is a, a written protest. So, does it need to be a petition, or will individual letters be accepted?
I think the question, if I understand you correctly, Debbie, do those signatures all, all have to be on one common petition? Or separate letters, it would need to be a petition? Yeah, okay.
It would be a petition.
So, excuse me, it essentially puts the onus of gathering the signatures on the neighborhood resident on the business owner?
Yes.
So basically, you're, so instead of the business owner having to get a yes, the neighborhood would have to collectively go together with the neighbor? Right, and, and again, it, it is, it significantly, I, it weakens the neighborhood approval. Because right now, the neighborhood, one, it's on the owner to do, or the, the liquor license applicant to do it. And if they say no, there's no way they can get a license. And this, under, under this proposed change, even if they say no, then if six council members and the mayor are, approve the liquor license, they can issue the license over the, the protest of the neighbors.
So the difference is, the, the council is never even consider, doesn't have any consideration if they can't click. It's taken out of our hands by, by an applicant not being able to gather signatures. We have no say in the matter.
I feel like the citizens have no say in the matter at the beginning, and the other way.
Personally, I feel like if the business, if the citizens don't want the business, it's up to the citizens to file protests against it. They need to go collect the signatures, if they got enough signatures, then we deal with it. It shouldn't be up to the business, if the business can afford to open their business and operate it, they should have the opportunity to do it. That's just my position.
Thank you, please.
And, and the point being is that the city council is the governing body of the city of Normandy, and so if, for some reason, residents do not vote in, or, or will not sign, or, you know, allowing the liquor license, that's still not putting it to the governing body to vote on, so this is putting it back to the governing body to vote on.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I, I think everybody understands the, the changes.
Yeah, let me ask this one question, if there is no petition, if there is no signatures from the, if there's no protest, does it still take a supermajority of the council?
No. I'm sorry, go ahead.
If the mayor refused, so this is how the, this, this feature will stay, in the current code, if the mayor refuses to sign the liquor license, it requires a supermajority. So even if no protest is fired, filed, it would only require a majority unless the mayor refuses to sign the liquor license. Then that would require a supermajority, so there's two different ways you can get to a supermajority.
And there is?
Say that again.
There is still one, even if a pro, if a protest is not filed, there's still a, a condition that a supermajority could be required, and that's if the mayor refuses to sign the liquor license.
There's essentially a veto.
A veto power on a simple majority, if I veto the vote, it would require two-thirds.
What would be the reasoning for the veto?
If I, if I thought it, it's happened before, if I thought it was ill-advised.
Right, okay, so that means that the mayor would have, he would be the only one that would make that decision.
No, it could go too far.
So let's say the?
So let's say that there was no protest, right? It's just an application, no protest. If five out of the eight members of the council vote to approve the application and then Mayor Beckman says nah and vetoes it, then it comes back to the council and the council can choose to override that veto with a two thirds, six, eight vote, right? So that's, that's the normal procedure. By the way, that, I mean, that applies to every ordinance, right? It's just exclusively, explicitly written out what's required for the liquor license. The other way is that if, again, after receiving letters, notices of the hearing on the application for liquor license, a majority of property owners within 200 feet submit a written protest expressing their displeasure with the application, then the standard is two thirds or six out of eight plus the mayor, right? So it requires that full, that full authority, right? It's a harder threshold to hit. It requires more approvals.
If there's, if there's an objection from the majority of the homeowners, it's a very, very high threshold to approve that liquor license.
Right.
Two thirds plus the mayor.
So again, to speak to Kiana's point, what this is doing is it's taking the the disapproval of the neighbors and kind of expressing that in the heightened threshold, you know, requiring a greater amount of council approval. To, because really that is how ultimately in the legislative process, the citizens express their voice is through your votes, right? And so that's really what this change is doing is putting the citizen's voice back in the guise of your votes rather than just a refusal to sign off on an application, which isn't even part of the legislative process.
Okay, so let me ask another question. If, is there a time limit between whatever time the, the letter would go out to residents? Is there a time limit to, for people to go out and organize and to do that, to protest?
So once an application is received, the administrative hearing on the application cannot be held for 30 days.
Got it.
So there's, right, depending on when that council meeting would fall, the next council meeting, I mean, it could be even longer than that.
Got it.
So at least 30 days.
And then citizens have up until five days prior to the hearing to submit the protest. So they've got, I mean, at the bare minimum, it's going to be like a 25 day period. But again, as Sam said, depending on how meetings fall, how the calendar falls, it could be.
Would that be, so there's an ending of those time limits?
Can you, I, we didn't hear you, sorry Debbie.
Could that be written in this regard to the 30 days, five days before the hearing? So it's, it's a clear understanding of the, of the time parameter when this needs to get done?
It is written in the code.
Well, it's written in the code and any notice on any application would send out would notify them of the date of the hearing and the date that a protest would need to be received.
Let me offer a scenario to Yolana's question. If the day after this meeting, you get an application. We don't have, you got the application with 30 days starts. We don't have a meeting for two weeks. So now the 30 days is down to 15 days. And now they get a five days that they have to have it in. So that's 10 days to organize.
No, but you couldn't hold it at the next meeting because it's within the third, within 30 days. There's a, there's a basically a, consider it like a 30 day cooling off period. The meeting, once the application comes in, the meeting cannot be held for 30 days. Even if they're like, well, not the meeting, but the application can't be considered at a meeting for 30 days. So that, that next workshop, this application could not go on the agenda.
Yeah, so for example, we received it tomorrow. It would, the 30 days would run up on Friday, the 10th. And the protest would have to be received by the 5th, right? And we would have the hearing on the 14th, our next regular meeting. But if we received that next Monday on the 15th, then we would have that hearing at the May workshop on May 23rd.
Well, I think what I'm hearing, I think the concern I'm hearing from the council is that as long as there's notification to the surrounding members of the community, unlike pronto, quick, no hesitation.
Once we receive an application and it's complete, we send out the mail.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, moving on. Okay, is there a motion for, well, I don't need a motion to read the resolution. I'm going to read the resolution. Resolution 24-08. A resolution of the city of Normandy, Missouri calling for the joint establishment of a multi-jurisdictional transportation development district with other participating municipalities within the 241 municipal partnership, authorizing the city to join in a petition to create a multi-jurisdictional transportation development district and authorizing certain actions related thereto. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 24-08? Is there a second? Is there any questions regarding what this is about and for the residents that may be their first meeting here? This puts, passing this resolution will, will put us in a pool of, Sam, is there 16 cities of participating? Approximately 16. I'm not sure all of them are in it though. But approximately 16, 18 municipalities to create a transportation development district. And that transportation development district will be authorized to levy tax, a sales tax. And this puts us in a pool. And if, if we, for example, were to pass a half set sales tax, we wouldn't make nearly the money as it being in this pool because we don't have the businesses that such as this in test. So this is definitely to our advantage to put ourselves in this pool and collect these taxes which will go to road maintenance and improvement. So is there a motion to adopt resolution 2408? Did we get a motion in a second? We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-09. A resolution of the city of Normandy, Missouri, authorizing the seated administrator to enter into an agreement with opinion research. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2409? Is there a second?
I have a question about this.
Let's get a second, second. There's a second? Any questions or comments?
Which one is the, is this the, is the opinion one?
Yeah, this is to get the opinion from the residents and get feedback on our.
What is Civic Plus?
Well, that was handed out late. Civic Plus is our website.
I know, but the Civic Plus has nothing to do with the survey.
No, that is correct. Yeah, yeah, this is to put the survey out to the residents in preparation of a strategic planning for the city.
The question that I had about this was, wait, okay, so we're going to, we're going to have a committee.
That's correct.
That, what do you call it, investigates this process.
Well, Sam, can you elaborate on that? There's going to be a, we're going to get.
I would like to schedule a meeting with the committee to help come up with questions for the survey.
Okay, so my question is, for the committee, is this the only, is this the only company that we, I wasn't here the last week, so I'm asking. Was this the only company that we talked, did we talk to UMSO or did we talk to?
We talked to UMSO and didn't, they didn't have any interns that were just ready for a program. And they basically said we could do something, but we're going to make you pay. So it wouldn't be free services. And then also I'm afraid that that would really drag out the process for quite a while. And so this is, this is the only company that, that we saw a quote from. They do have a contract with the Missouri Municipal League for municipal surveys. And as the contract we're going under with some discounts because of our size, they scaled it down a little bit. So, yeah, this is the.
So, and once again, I was not here. So my other question would be, would it be more beneficial for the committee, much like when we have like planning and zoning, to like research and then make a recommendation instead of only having this one company? Because my concern is also that like, I mean, I got this paper and I got this paper and I don't know, I don't know what they've done already. Do you get what I'm, like, does that make sense? Like, I don't know, like, they're about or like.
Get a sample of their survey.
We have helped this.
I have samples, I don't know that any.
We have helped this community do this and like, this is the work that's been done and this is what it looks like. Like, I, you know what I mean?
Sure, I know that they've done, they did a recent survey with the city of Republic and they did a recent survey with the city of Osage Beach. And they've done plenty of work before that and I can share those with you.
I'm just wondering if it would be more beneficial for like the.
That's up to the council.
The, this is my, I guess my question. For the committee to look at it first and then to like, reach out to like UMSO or like.
Well, we've reached out to UMSO.
Or better, or beyond, or like other, like locally, like local places and then make a recommendation. That's what I'm asking, that's my question.
Well, I'll give you my position on it. I don't, considering 1,856 page questionnaires being mailed to every resident and then the objective data that we're going to be getting, it's a pretty impressive looking report. I can't imagine.
Am I looking at another, I'm asking, am I looking at another report?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't have it. I will tell you, I don't, I don't think we're going to beat the price and I think it's a good product.
But it's only this page that we got.
Yeah, the sample reports are in the packet.
Okay. I would like to see the sample reports too.
The question that I had when I talked with you and Sam about it a while ago was whether we got raw data or just that we could parse out, deep in the tables with whatever? Or we just got a written report from these folks?
I think we get both, Sam.
Yeah, we get both. We get a cross tab analysis and then we also get it reported in tabular form in Excel. So, yeah, we'll get an Excel sheet.
Anyone else?
Who's on the committee to?
Well, Yolana has volunteered and Karen has volunteered and David has volunteered.
I'm not volunteering, unless I can.
Yes, that's perfect.
So you got all the members for the board?
So there's a motion and there's a second, any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Eyes have it, motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
There's a motion to adjourn. There's a second. Lacking a second, the motion will die. There's a motion to adjourn.
We've got three more things.
We've managed to say six times.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Lacking a second for motion. Resolution 2410. A resolution of the city of Normandy, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Civic Plus. And did the attachment ever make it to there? Do you ask up here? Okay, so there's the contract, the same contract we had last year to manage our website.
Yeah, this is a renewal of our website.
2409.
Our subscription.
They tried before.
Yeah, which one?
It's a resolution 2410.
2410, okay.
Yep, 2410 is to reauthorize the contract for the website. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion.
Resolution 24-10.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment?
Are we satisfied with the website and how they're presenting it?
I can answer that because I don't attempt to manage it. Are we satisfied with the website?
It's got the best service.
It's working.
And.
Is it?
But if there's some content that needs to be updated which isn't on the provider, but at this time, I, I think a two-year renewal is good for us.
How long have they been working with us, two years?
Two years under the current platform, we had a higher version of their package before that.
I'm not satisfied with the website. Some of that information is really old.
I, I will tell you, this is going to be addressed next time it comes up for renewal and I, I'm not sure that's not a year from what I'm reading.
It's two years.
Is cleaning up the website though something that we tell them?
No, so they do a redesign. And when they did the redesign two years ago, they just took all the information from last website and they put it in their new format. But the content that's out of date, that's not on the provider.
Is that on us?
That's on us, so. And we have, I've been, I've been working with Dennis to make some changes. We've made a lot of changes on the core page. There's just some more work that needs to be done and, but that's not on Civic Plus.
So if we wanted to change things that were on the website, would we like tell you and then, or we, will we meet as, with the representative to like?
No. I, we could reach out to support, but most of the changes we pretty much can do. It's, there's some stuff that we'd have to reach out for, but if it's just like content, text changes, we can facilitate that.
Any other comment?
Well, I remember the comments making that it's very difficult to do that and time consuming. So why isn't the company that we're hiring to do the website enable staff to clean it up?
So compared to the last website, which was three times the price, it is a lot harder to make changes on the website. But right now, looking at switching to a different provider, we probably spend about the same amount of time doing that as we could just fix the content on the website. So I prefer just to renew and then.
It is quite a chore, changing over. Any other comment? There's a motion and there's a second to adopt resolution 24-10. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-11. A resolution of the city of Normandy, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into and execute a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri for vector control services and authorizing and, and authorizing and direction the mayor of the city of Normandy to enter into on behalf of the city, a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri for vector control. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 24-11?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, and again, this is just a contract that we contacted with the county. If we don't use them, they never charge us, there's no fee to enter into this contract. But if the piper heads our way and we have a rat infestation problem, we may consider. Please.
Do you use it for mosquito control?
Yes, this is mosquito control also. Is there, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote. I don't know, all in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Item number six. Approval to refer the question of amending parking regulations in chapter 405 of the Normandy City Code to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. We, we're discussing parking now, but that's only for the mixed use district. This would send to planning and zoning, our parking reg in general. Is there a motion to refer the question of many parking regulations in chapter 405 of the Normandy City Code to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration?
I'll make a motion.
There is a motion, is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Was that a no vote, Debbie?
Oh, no, I, does this have to do with the parking document we received based on jurisdictions?
This is going to be, that was for the mixed use district. This is just addressing parking in general and addressing.
We already said that we were going to continue to have restrictions on parking based on.
That was for the mixed use district and we're still having that conversation. This is just sending to planning and zoning, considering section 405, which is parking for. This is just sending to planning and zoning cons- considering section four oh five, which is parking for all businesses in general. Am I stating that correctly?
Yeah. So, so remember anything, any zoning changes, any, any changes to districts have to go through planning and zoning. So right now, we have an ordinance that's gone through planning and zoning for mixed-use and we're making changes regarding parking. But we can't change things in the commercial district or in the neighborhood shopping district because that hasn't gone through planning and zoning. So this is just gonna send back and we'll, we'll just read, we'll address all the parking in all the districts. And then that will come through to council.
Residential and?
I, we can look at our residential, although I don't expect much changes.
There could be.
There could be though.
There could be recommendations for changes, right?
Yeah, right.
Recommendations. Kiana, did I get a motion to make this referral?
Yes.
Yes, you did, you got it.
We got a motion in a second? Are there any other comments or questions?
You got it all in favor, Chris.
All right, thank you. Item seven. Approval to refer the question of adding regulations to allow outdoor seating at restaurants to chapter four oh five of the Normandy City Code to Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. There, there's a motion?
Oh, second.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second to refer the question of adding regulations to allow outdoor seating. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. At this time, if there's any citizens that would like to come to the podium to make comments, please do so.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this, these comments are pretty much for everyone. Um, Sam, I've dealt with you a few times and you've been such a dear, really sweet. But I will tell you as a citizen, I felt like you were making excuses for the city enforcement gentleman. I know, Mark, I had you on an email, I emailed you one time about some repeat offenders on my street, four times, four weeks. And I think my last email was like, I'm typing the same message and taking the same pictures, I'm only in town twice a week. And if I'm saying the same things and he's not coming around, and it also feels like I'm hearing this come more from Ward One and Ward Two. I just wanna say that this is a whole city that comprises all the wards and no one ward person should only be concerned about their ward. We should care about the entire city. So he needs to not just be focusing on three and four off a natural bridge and care about all of us. Speaking of that, I don't remember your name, but I'm so happy to see you. I know the last time I saw you, there were shenanigans going on, you sound brighter and festive and I, I'm just really glad to see that. But in reference to the police patrol, I'm only here twice a week. I've got cameras all around my house, they used to patrol twice a day. And I would always know when they came by because the light they flash sets off my alarm, not in a bad way, but it switches to, they like, they're not coming around my neighborhood. So I, I, I love that we're checking on Bill Nor, but we have to take care of home first and I don't think that they're doing their basic patrol. One thing I just wanna, and push on everybody, we need to be proactive versus reactive. We're definitely in reactive mode right now. You talked about signs, I'm not quite sure what your name is, being forty-five dollars each and then being fifty bucks. That's only two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We're that broke, we can't afford signs, they've been missing for four years. So if we're getting new police cars and we have a director of public works and a manager, like, who needs to get fired? We need to be able to balance some things and it feels like we have so many expenditures, but the residents aren't getting any services. I don't, it's like we're bleeding and if somebody keeps bleeding, they die. And in this case, it's the death of a city. The streets, no signs, no basic services, the leaf thing is always broken. We just have a really, really huge deficit and I know we were talking about the new business. I know that that business that was there last time was a burden, not just on your neighborhood, but in general. If we boggle down the businesses, we won't have any income coming in. So I know we wanna be mindful of what happened, but let's not penalize somebody before they make so many mistakes. And the last thing I wanna say is I can send this to you if you want, speaking of signs, I told you about this last year. There is like a game going on where kids are intentionally knocking down signs, so they've knocked down the signs.
Thirty seconds for me.
For seventy going west, they've knocked them all down on Bermuda Road again. So again, if old boys driving around, I have pictures from a month ago, how has nobody noticed that the highway signs have been knocked down?
Those are actually controlled by MoDOT.
Oh, yeah, I know, but last time I told Mark they called and told somebody, but if MoDOT doesn't know, nobody wants them to know, so, thanks guys.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Please.
So, the cat distribution system is in full effect in our, uh, double cul-de-sac. There are so many cats and kittens and I know that, um, okay, I'm not helping issues, I'm feeding them too. But there's like, there's like, there's another lady in our cul-de-sac and she has about seven.
Right.
Of them and then like, we, I actually bought a Petco box and I was gonna try to catch it because I found an organization that will, they'll spare a new one, but then they give them back to you to like, you gotta release them, which is fine because I've been finding some cat carcasses too and I, I, that makes me sad. So, um, if anyone has any, I'm sorry, if anyone has any like solutions, any other foundations or anything that they can like send those resources our way.
Is that the one around the corner?
Yeah, I'm Dunbar.
I'm Dunbar. I'm in Duncam.
Yeah.
I'll see you.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
How are you guys doing? Oh, quick question, Sam, um, for the trash enclosure, uh, did the owner, um, submit a application, a building permit application?
Uh, not yet, but my understanding, they, they took the application with them, they just haven't returned it yet.
Okay.
And I can catch up with you after the meeting, if you got questions about your permit.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, last meeting, uh, for the hours, we voted, it was an unanimous vote, uh, for Monday to, to Thursday, it closed at ten and, uh, Friday through Sunday, it closed at eleven. Uh, why the change?
Uh, my understanding was there was no change.
That's not a question for me, that's a question for the council.
Yeah, my understanding, the, the re- recommendation from planning and zoning was Sunday through Thursday, close at ten, Friday and Saturday, close at eleven.
But if I'm not mistaken, it's in your paperwork, isn't it?
Well, even whatever's in the paperwork, there was a motion tonight to make it the way it is.
Yeah, so yeah, that's all I was asking, like, why change, like, from last month to this month, why the change?
It was recommended by other board, the other board and to get you guys going in the right direction, we took a lot of it from there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and, um, so my next question is, um, to require a liquor license, we need signatures from two hundred feet of the building. Um, is that two hundred feet, do that start at our front door or does it start at the end of our property line?
Starts at the end of the property line.
Okay.
It would probably be more productive and you're welcome to s- make any public comments you want, but if you have specific questions about the application, it's probably better, Sam will be happy to stay after and, and address those with you.
I just like, I just got a couple more questions, um, and that, those old, uh, does the, uh, signatures have to be, but from residents or owners?
Under the current code, property owners, thirty seconds for me.
That's the current, okay. When do the new proposal change take effect?
The council will vote, we'll have a second reading at the May meeting.
All right. And, uh, last question. Chapter four oh five, uh, the approval to regarding the outdoor seating at restaurants. Uh, is that something that takes effect next, next meeting that needs to be voted on as well?
Outdoor seating, I would expect, that would probably be in front of the council. I mean, it could take months.
That's going to planning and zoning first.
Planning and zoning, they're gonna work on the ordinance. It could take several meetings for them and then it would go to the council and then they'd have two readings also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So, I know you said if we have any questions, then we can stay up to the meeting.
Please.
This is kinda backpacking off of what Andre said about, um, the signatures. I just want to say that, so, we did go around attempting to get signatures. A lot of the properties that were, 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 uh, within the two hundred feet were either vacant or the property owner, or they were rented out. So they were tenants staying there and not property owners. And I just want to put just a thought for the council people that, um, with, with you guys wanting us to get owner's signatures who don't live in the neighborhood, would actually be quite unfair to us in my opinion, just because they have no motive to really even give a signature or even want to be in response to what we're trying to do here, so.
And I appreciate that and, and, and your concern is being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm not gonna ask for a meeting to go into closed, I'm sorry?
Oh, to re- to re-.
Okay. I'm not gonna ask for a meeting to go in a closed session, is there a meet, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
There's a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor? 食言 adjourned, thank you. A lot of material.